We can talk about the library.
Do that first.
We've had these things for two years now and the temporary Jasper five weeks.
Now we get to make our own.
All right, Megan's back at six o'clock, so I'll call us to order here. We have a large agenda tonight. Generally, we like to keep our working sessions to an hour. Looking at what we have, I think two is going to be reasonable, but I'm going to cut this off at two. If we can't talk about a lot of this within two hours, well, then we just need to devote more time. But if we hit eight o'clock, we're going to run out of steam and just die out. So we have a number of people here to talk about the library, so I'm not going to make them all wait. We'll take that first. Then Belinda's here for the ARPA funds second. And then from there, we'll jump into some of the new business.
Make an entrance, Steve.
That was my trip.
That was there for a reason.
I requested it, but I forgot to bring it.
Next.
I've got it as well. I just didn't know if we had a paper copy. All right, so. Okay. So we will start with a discussion about the library, which is on page 20 of our agenda. We have a letter from our city engineer regarding cause of study. We also had an email. I received it, I think everybody else did as well on the council, from Pat Hanson sending us some stuff. I'm going to forward that to Jennifer so that we can get copies entered into the record. Does anybody need a copy of that letter that Pat sent out? Realistically, what we have is we have a citizen push in the community among some city and some township residents to build or find a new library space. And how are we going to go about doing this? Something that's been talked about for years, and let's make a plan for it. Who from the library can talk about the status of what's happening at Washburn Court? I know there have been some discussions, some things that may or may not pan out with Centra Care. Is anybody authorized to talk about what Centra Care is thinking of doing?
I serve on the board of the local operating committee for Centra Care in Painesville.
I'm just going to interrupt you. Just if we could just introduce who we are, just because Jennifer's taking minutes, we know who you are, Steve.
Sure, yeah. Yes, Beijing Shang. Yeah, Steve Peterson, I guess I'm a township resident. But since I serve, I'm not trying to get airtime, but have some knowledge of the situation from a Centra Care perspective. So I will go through the whole thing, but with the addition of the essentially Centra Care getting all the senior care business, as I think most of you know, and the building of the assisted living site with under new ownership out on Highway 55, which is due to open now, I think they're on schedule in April, which only 30 days away from that, that really kind of renders Washburn Court obsolete from a, from the new owners' perspective. What happens is that the residents that are currently at Washburn Court will be able to live in the brand new facilities, having private bathrooms and private apartments for a monthly fee that's less than what they pay here. So it would be foolish for anybody that's not there in April, they're going to be moving out, and that building will essentially be abandoned with its current purpose. Centra Care again has, we've had discussions with Centra Care leadership, both in Painesville and in St. Cloud, at the senior level, David Morrison, who is VP of Real Estate for Centra Care Everywhere, is part of the executive team, and he's well aware of the situation. They've expressed that they don't see a use within Centra Care for Washburn Court. So that's the background. The question is, what happens to that building? The discussions we've had is that if it, I think it went to the proper purpose, I think Centra Care still does have with some of your discussions and what you've talked about creating the variance for the new site, which you've done recently in your meetings, there is, there is a brand reputation that Centra Care wants to maintain here, so to be able to essentially potentially donate it to an entity to be used for a high purpose, I think is within Centra Care, there's no guarantee here, but I think there's a real interest in doing that on their part. So that's the background with Centra Care. The questioning is, is to who? And I think it would be, and I think the Friends of the Library would be very interested in the potential use of, as I think Sean already mentioned, Neil Sean, that we think that the current space is too small and other things, as the study and what Pat had forwarded to council members, you can read about in detail. So looking at four-ish, you know, I mean, up to about 6,000 square feet. You've looked at, and probably the architectural renderings of that first floor is 6,800 square feet, the first floor of Washburn Court. There's the elevator there, there's some, there's some cafeteria and space, but, you know, potentially would be about, I think, the square footage that would accommodate a nice library. The discussions that we've had, and full disclosure, have been, you know, either that site, or if that didn't work and the city wanted to utilize the space over there for that building and indent some, the first floor, potentially the library would fit nicely into this space. I don't know, we talked before about square footage with the waste facilities, no, there's a lot of other moving parts there, but could be, could move to this site as well. So really, there's, so the whole thought would be that, we've talked about potential, who, who the Centra Care could essentially enter negotiations with to transfer title at potentially a very low rate, maybe it's, you know, a dollar for ownership for that building, which is obviously, you know, a good deal. There is some work that needs to be done in that building, which is what I think we're going to talk about in a moment. That's some of the engineering sort of costs that we want to sort of do their due diligence on before this. So the Friends of the Library have been in active dialogue with city council members for a number of months now about, we think it's the best for the city to take ownership of this. There would be other options too, if the city passed on that, but I think it would be, would be best. So we've been, I guess, prodding and asking, you know, for you all, and I know we got a lot on your plate, to sort of evaluate this, and I think Centra Care, in fact, David said at our meeting a couple of months ago, would really welcome a proposal, a sort of, just a plan. You know, one page doesn't have to be a long book, it just needs, here would be our intent, and we would put the Washburn Court to this potential use, and we'd be a really willing recipient of the property. And so, and in terms of timing, as we've discussed, Centra Care, again, as I said, from a business operations standpoint, it will be kind of May 1st probably, that will no longer be a viable entity. Centra Care's also fiscal year, I think, is it go to the end of June or June 1st? I can't remember.
June 30th.
June 30th, July 1st. They'd really like to have, you know, this kind of off their books, so to speak, I mean, it's not a drop dead deal, but they prefer to have that not to carry the real estate for another fiscal year. So we've got kind of a time, time is a little bit of the essence here, to sort of do the deal. So maybe that's just, I didn't come prepared with that, it's off the top of my head, a kind of a background from the Friends of the Library, and I think the context. Anybody from the group would want to add to that, something I missed.
So I will just chime in, and that was my understanding in some of the conversations, Steve, that you and I have had, that I've heard, but nothing was official, nothing was public, so I didn't want to give too much credence to what it meant, talked about until things were official. I think that it would also make a good municipal building. My thought is use it, we have three floors, I think they could serve three distinct purposes. One of those floors potentially being a library, the other one being either an expanded city hall, or DMV, or maybe a police station. And then the third floor, I think that space would work really well for a commercial incubator space, for people opening a new business to move in at a very reduced or no rent, run through our economic development program. They're sitting on a chunk of money that they could help fund the renovation of that space to help offset some of the costs. So that was my theory of it, I'm one of five, of course, but I thought that we could maybe make something like that work. I don't know, you know, we have the proposal for a study here, price tag of 11,000. My understanding is that the Friends of the Library have some money to contribute something. I don't want to be too presumptuous, but we also have grant opportunities.
So the Friends of the Library did receive a $10,000 grant to do a study, but we need some of that to promote the idea to the community. And so what we decided was 8,000 to help out with the study of Washburn. So of that 10,000, we keep a little bit back for the promotion, because the community is really who we represent as the Friends, and we want them involved. In order to do that, it's going to cost some.
So what I'm hearing is you need the city to buy in on two things. One, that we're going to move forward in seriously looking at moving the library and doing something with it. Two is you need a buy-in of $3,000 to help pay for the study, and the other eight is going to come from the Friends. Is that, because I do think, and Rob, my understanding, Chuck's quote was 8,500 to study that building, and then the 25 is to study this building?
I cannot bear by that.
So if I recall, we were still in our last meeting, kind of going back and forth between whether the library would go here or in Washburn Court. If, and if you have, would say council support, you know, Sean's deal, that you think that there's a larger use for Washburn Court for the city, for other things besides the library, it would probably make sense, I think, speaking for us, that if the library goes there, we would contribute the 8,000 towards that, because that was really our original purpose. We were looking at potentially, if we had to do some studies around cost of converting this space, we were thinking that maybe the city would contribute a little bit more, and we would, because it would cost some more to do it. But if we lock in on, you know, city taking the whole thing, Sean, then I think that would be appropriate here.
I agree too, I agree in with the Friends, because that's a lovely space there too. One of the things we've been battling with is space, Great River, is they provide our employees and the materials for our library, and it's so heavily used. I'm really excited about the fact that we can offer even more. The space that they have in their study, they did two of them during the last two years, and the current building's square footage is 2,800 square feet. They recommend 4,000, and this is, I've done research all across the country, of what space is needed for like being able to have enough technology, space between people sitting together, that type of thing. 4,388, so that's 6,000 on the main floor is even more than what we.
Three square feet is this thing.
And hard.
It's like 50, 5,000 something.
With the police.
With the police.
The other thing, issue that we're really struggling with, Tess, another friend of the library, would really attest to this, is the handicap in front of the library where it's at now, you can't get a big van in there, for one thing. The seniors, from our seniors, and I represent them, their senior van won't even bring them downtown. They have to depend on somebody else to bring their materials. And Tess tried the other day, it didn't.
It was all right. Boy, you don't realize it until you need it, and it's not very accessible, because if you park in that spot, and I can drive myself now, but then I still got to jump up on the curb, I mean, because there's no room, so it's a challenge.
It's a challenge, and the other thing with that building, then, the city owns it. You could still sell it for somebody who's on it. Nice little building, but it's too small. Yes.
I'm in on the study. I think 3,000 for potential for a new library is a reasonable cost to the city. I appreciate the Friends for being willing to contribute towards the cost, and the efforts that you've made to fundraise. I think the data are clear that the more resources we have for education in the community, especially for kids and young adults, the less resources we need in other areas. The more advanced some of these education, the less likely they are to commit crimes and things of that nature. If we can open up access to computers and things like that, we can help people find jobs in an era of remote work and things, so I think absolutely we need to continue building on the library. Great River's done, I think, an impeccable job of expanding its resources to meet 21st century needs. So I'm all in favor of continuing to support that. I think a study is one small step, but in the right direction, and I think it's the necessary step to see if we can use that building.
If indeed we decide to all move forward on this, there's a grant from the Minnesota Department of Education that the Friends of the Library can then move to, but that's due in January. And so there's a little bit of an element here where we were so excited, I mean, I've been energized by the meetings we have had, by the interest in this from people I talk to, and thought, what are we doing, what are we doing? So our community is really excited too.
And Joan, that's a more sizable grant that could be used.
I took 400,000, I believe.
That could be used in the remodeling of the space, right?
Right.
Physically.
For the library portion.
Right. And so I'd be willing to write the grant at that point, then we would hire a project manager and go forward from there.
Neil, you have some thoughts?
I guess we all agree that the needs of the library, we've discussed this many times in the footage and all that, nobody's disagreed. I agree the study has to be done to see if indeed this will work. And one time, I forget who said, on the load bearing, because it's quite immense, it probably have to be on the ground level. So, I mean, we need to go into this thinking that's probably a reality, but I'm not against 11,000. I mean, the study is phase one, and if it ain't going to work, then we're basically starting over. I'm not sure the city would be interested in building if we can't do the library. Something we need to look at, but I mean, the library would make it a lot more acceptable.
And then the DMV, other overflow of your city hall, you have two corners right there on Main Street that would be connected.
If you had a choice of where you wanted the library, would you prefer there or here?
I'm at this point that just to move forward, either one, we'll make it work. They're both beautiful buildings.
Better parking, more parking.
I think, being in Friends, I would prefer over there for some of the issues we already discussed, accessibility, having some green space, having kids get out, having programs there. I think that would be a preferred site to this one, but both would be a great upgrade from what we currently have. So we wouldn't turn down either, but I think, I think my preference would be over there, speaking for myself, so.
Can I add something to that as well?
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead, Derek.
Oh, hi, Derek.
I just wanted to make sure that they read through this book of work, and that we got our city engineer to make sure that it includes everything you'd like to see there, because this is the second version of it, we added some more context to what the city engineer would do. So before we say yes, we'd like to proceed with this, let's at least make sure that this will give us the information we need to make a decision.
Well, I think for purposes of our working session tonight, what I'm hearing from the Friends is that the Friends are willing to contribute 8,000 dollars towards the cost of the study.
And we've been on that report.
Okay, so the city can put on, well, our deadline's passed for our next council meeting, that deadline was on Tuesday, to get things added to the agenda, but we can put it on for our first meeting in, we have, you know, we have another meeting later in March.
Second meeting.
Yeah, we can put it on our second meeting in March to move forward with the study. We can get a firm cost on, or a firm estimate on the cost, and then take a vote on whether or not we would pay the difference. And I, from what I'm hearing at the table, we would, and there's a lot of interest in moving forward with that. Did I say that you had your hand up earlier, Paul?
Yeah, I tell you what, with the Friends of the Library, I appreciate all the work that you're doing here, but there's some hurdles that you might want to think about. Okay, one of them is 20 years down the road. If Washburn Court doesn't get this, what's going to happen 20 years down the road? With today's generation, okay, now we got different generations happening here. We've got some older ones, including myself, we've got the middle age, we've got the ones coming out of high school. Most of the high school have their candles and their Googles, and a librarian in the high school barely gets used, in fact.
Well, can I address that, because I was their librarian for 20 years, but in the high school.
Let me finish up, because my understanding that the junior high or middle school and high school can consolidate, because it doesn't get used that much anymore.
I did that.
Or handle that.
That was my job, I did that.
Okay.
On purpose.
All right, so it's, you've got to sell the people the competition that you're running up against. From what was going on 50 years ago, where people would go pick up a book to do for their English class, do a book report, those days aren't happening anymore. So it's one of those things that we have to kind of worry about, is it going to be feasible in 20 years?
It will be obsolete, is what you're kind of saying?
I'm saying we're working our way towards it being obsolete.
I took a vision.
I think, oh, I'm telling you.
This is, I'm so excited. I didn't bring that up. I'm so excited, because this is exactly where I have grandchildren, some have gone to the Roseville Library, and this is exactly where, if you talk to anybody that's in the public library system or the school library system, we're leaning towards what everybody needs next. They need the opportunity to be able to look for jobs and some training for those jobs. They need, a lot of them like to go in and pick up DVDs, movies, but that'll change. But your librarians here too in Great River, they're aware of all that. That's why they talked about the word green space is really big right now. If you go to the American Library Association, it's all about green space, because what can you do to start giving the interest to children for knowledge, whether it's print, audiobooks? We do a lot of audiobooks with the high school here, but they provide it for free, and that's where you, sorry, Barnes and Noble, but it is what we do to service the community. It's opportunities for space when we have some, I'm going to throw this out there, maybe there's some space of the veterans that need to come in and maybe they're DA, work a little bit more, having a space. Now they go to the Legion one day a month, but they could have their own room. And what did you call it? Somebody who just have a space to have a, like if they're.
Working out of home.
Yeah, and they need a space to just come in and meet with their customers, that type of thing. It provides that space for a need now. If you're working from home, you need to work with the customer.
Does a library have auto access to, say, other universities?
Yes, that's all unlimited, globally.
Paul, I was on the library ad hoc committee a year and a half ago with Joan, and you know, I think you have to look at the way the library stands maybe today or 10 years ago, is not going to be what it is in 10 years now. But there's still that need for that resource center, and I think that's maybe a better word than a library anymore, because it will have potentially an area for kids to go do science projects.
Yeah.
Or, you know, hands-on.
Or robotics.
Or sewing, whatever they need.
Whatever they need.
Versus reading a book. The books will still be there, but not to the extent they were 10 years ago.
And Luau also, he's got his finger up, he's, he thought about, there's a kitchen there. What if you had cooking classes? I mean, that's what a library is for, and we should throw that out. It should be a resource area and make it.
And these are the things that we have to try and sell the other people in town on, because right now I'm just kind of being a sponge and getting information, so I can pass it on to the people who are going, what do we need in the library for? Well, let me tell you what, let me give you an idea, so anyways.
Leo, then Megan.
So one of the things I think we have to get out of our heads, what a library was, and even probably stop calling it a library and go with a resource center, because the resource center is what direction things are going. I've had a contact with a number of people, older people, that's what's really interesting. They said, is there going to be computers in there? And I said, I don't know, sounds like it could be. And he said, you know, then I could use a computer, it costs me $100 a month if I'm going to get it online, I could go down there and use a library, a resource center. And then he looked at me and he said, they could also teach me how to use it. Okay? Then the other thing is, is by having a big enough building, you can always add, if there's a three-story building over there, you can always add. I would look at the thing and say, if the structure works for a library, and the problem is, I think that more than it came, the dividing walls, are they going to be structurally sound? The building can be structurally sound. So if you look at it and do two floors, forget about the third floor, doing anything on the third floor, that can be something future, because this can, a resource center is just a moving thing now, it's just, what's going to be the big thing 10 years from now? What is it now? What was it 10 years ago? There's just so many things can be done, and with the school not having the same library situation, there's a lot of cooperation can be done there. And then put the whole thing together with the community, I think that the township would probably be involved with something here. And if this goes forward, I think that the community foundation would get involved with this. So as far as a cost to the community, get some grants, community foundation in, I don't think it could probably cost that much for the city to get into it. Now, where would it be? I would kind of like to challenge it doing something over Washburn Court versus this place, because I think that just has some unique opportunities going forward.
Megan has some thoughts.
So one of the things that, when Great River talked about the space that we need, one of the things that they did look into was the circulation that we currently provide, and it's quite high for a, you know, space our size. So it's not like they're just going into it saying, well, this is the space we need, it is based on the number of people who currently use it, which I think people who aren't as involved with the library don't know quite how high that is, but it is very high for the space we have. And we talked about green space being one of those words that people, phrases, one of those that people talk about a lot these days, and another one is third space, which is a space that is not your home and it's not your workplace. And libraries are one of the few, very few remaining free third spaces for people to gather in and to use. So I think when, if we call it, as Leo was saying, if we say it's a library and a resource center, a library and a community center, I think it'll be more, people understand a little more what the vision of this space is, because we offer so many programs in the little space that we already have, you know, there's music instruments, there's sewing, there's crafts, there's video games, and it's a really good resource for kids who are too old for daycare, but not quite old enough to drive, get around with their friends. And I think if we had even more space to offer more things, we could offer a lot to the community. And I think that with a pandemic, it showed us the need for some of those third spaces for people who were not able to access school at their house, or, you know, a lot of other things. It was really, I saw kids who would bring their laptop and sit outside the library because it wasn't open, but they could get the internet just sitting outside, so that was very helpful. And for me, I just feel like one of the things that we've talked about a lot is the need for the library to remain downtown, or the desire for the library to remain downtown, and I just personally don't feel like this space, a space like this is going to come up again, certainly not for the price of one green dollar, so I think that it's something we should seriously consider. And another thing too, I was thinking about, I think we had discussed at one of the meetings, was that even if it doesn't seem to work, and the spaces are flip-flopped, and this would be better for the library there still, because they're both city entities, it is a possibility to use the green space for library programs as well, since it's just right across the street, so I think that's something to keep in mind as well that wasn't mentioned.
Let me throw what I'm issuing. The parking lot, part of, across the street, is part of Centra Care, and maybe the city would want to look at picking up a corner lot. would want to look at fitting up the corner lot, trying, if it's all going forward, one building, with nickel, it's probably available.
You're downtown.
Sky's the limit.
No, I think there's a lot of room for growth, there's unlimited potential there, you know? But if we want to show Centricare that we have a commitment to fitting in with their purpose, we have to do the study and make sure that we can get there.
Yes.
So, that was my point. To make a amount of this real good input into actionable points, you know, one, obviously, at your next meeting to do the funding, the second would be to, you know, kind of take the, a step forward and say that we're really interested in the city acquiring through this terms that we talked with, and let, and not get known to Centricare. Um, I, I would say sometime in the April timeframe, you wouldn't have to do it, but in your next one or two city council meetings, and you have time then to figure out how to do it. I think that the, the pathway, the resistance and the always here, the cost, we can't say 100%, but the funding liabilities to get the library there, I think in my mind are minimal for, for, you know, taxpayers of the city, for, for what you do. The rest of it is kind of gravy, if you will, it's frosting, if you can utilize the rest of the space. So, with some of Leo's ideas, what second or third floor, and I think we all know that, again, it's your business, but this isn't the most friendly DMV space, and we all know that, and you know that, you get complaints about. I think you do, you have the parking over there, it's going to be much more conducive to kind of the customer experience here, um, going forward. So, I, I love your idea, Sean, around the whole use of the building, but you're not going to, I ask, I don't think you need to figure out that whole thing, but at least you can secure the very little cost, the, the building and unit, and have a plan in the next, you know, year or two to, to move the library there, and then you can go from there later, so, sort of a stepwise process.
Well, from a fiscal standpoint, I like the idea of putting some sort of economic development in it, so that that group gets chipped in towards the cost of remodeling.
Yeah.
Because they're sitting on a good chunk of money and...
And we haven't discussed an incubation space for it sometime in the year.
Right, as an industrial manufacturing concept.
Yes, but...
I don't know that it's been discussed as commercial.
We should rework that.
You know, we, we align several, attended the township panel board meeting yesterday and last night.
I understand Leo's gotten voluntold into some mediation.
He was the moderator. Yeah, great job. I got, I sent my bill in too.
Yeah, anyhow, but they, they, as you know, I didn't realize this, they sit on a big chunk of change too for EDAF. To Leo's point around sharing, that would be, you know, to tap into some of their EDAF dollars as well, to maybe jointly fund this with the city's portion, maybe you consider that all in one pool, I don't know, but there's roughly $600,000 in, in cash that this council has.
Well, their $600,000 includes their receivables. Their total cash on hand is 176.
Okay.
Yeah, it was 176.
There's a CD and there are two...
Steve and I just talked about it today, so that's, yeah, he had the understanding that it was 600.
Was there a CD in there?
There could have been.
There was a 240,000 CD that I think would be available to, in addition to the 176. If you check, that's what they had left.
The key is the money, the figures you're throwing out, it's just a single person who, you know, paid my taxes, I don't have that many taxes here compared to what I would do fully, I know fully is out of the space, but anyway, get off that subject. The key is that we're not trying to build new, we're not talking millions, right?
Right.
And, you know, also looking at that EDAF monies for remodel, that's, I mean, it's all taxpayer money that we're paying, that we're playing around with at the end of the day, but by using the economic development, that's sourced from different areas, it's sourced from loan paybacks, it's sourced from grant monies from the state that we got when it was originally ceded.
Right.
So, it's not taking, it's not going to affect the levy as other costs would be.
Well, just looking at the property tax map here, and Washburn Court last year paid $17,750 in taxes. If the city takes that over, there's going to be a shortfall somewhere along the way.
Yep.
And that's liability that we're going to have to look at too, and again, this is something we're going to have to sell the residents in town, because basically, we have to speak for them. Like I said before, there's really only two things that we'll be able to decide, is one is when you die, and the other one is what's going to be on your property tax statement. So, that's one of the things that we have to try to explain to those out there, why everything's going up, so.
I think that $17,000, that's the total taxes, and the city gets probably $4,000 out of that.
Probably.
Yeah. Oh, sure.
Township gets another, school districts get another quarter, and the county gets about half.
And I think it's also important to note that if that building were to shutter and just sit vacant, the tax value is going to drop dramatically.
Either way, yeah.
A couple of pluses on that building, is they did major work on it, the windows are new, last five years, the roof, I believe, has the same thing. The elevator just had an update also. So, it's engineering study, the hospital did an engineering study on it to see if they could expand the room size over there, so they could have bigger rooms, and that is in the study. Well, I, I don't think that the, I don't know if the engineering firm knows that we got this study.
Yeah, so, Tarek has been given a copy of the Centricare study that Brandon passed to me, that I passed on Tarek to you several months ago, actually, and if we don't have that, we should put it in the hands of Bolton and Bank, and a lot of what Leo's talking about, so, you, so, you know, it really, their 11,000 study is going to be, it really sort of jump-started with the more recent work that Centricare paid, you know, a lot more money than that to do their own engineering studies, so I doubt any further.
Yeah, Bolton and Bank have the copy of that study.
Okay, good. So, Nate, sure.
Neil.
I'm going to ask that we wrap it up, I think we spent enough time. We know that we need to go ahead with the study, and depending what the study tells us, if the study says no way, no how can you put that much weight in here, or it's square one.
Yeah, I was going to get there, yep. So, we appreciate, anything else then that you need from us immediately?
I don't know if we need to put together a letter to Centricare?
Well, I think that's what we're going to ask them to do.
Yeah.
I think it'd be good for the city to make contact with, with Nate Warsen at Centricare, he's the person I think takes...
That number are interested in it.
Yeah, it'd really be a good idea to make contact with them, and see if it's really available. We've been talking what if so far, but is it really available? If they say no, there's something else, then we're all done again, but...
Well, my understanding is it is likely available, yeah?
Yeah, I think so, but I think they're kind of waiting for, you know, a kind of a buyer, you know, if you will, in this case, though, whether it's you or Tarek or whoever that to make a contact. And I think speaking for Friends of the Library, that we would certainly join you, you know, you could reference us and co-sign the letter of interest or something like that, which is what you could do. It's not a full-blown proposal, literally, but it's just more of a over, overture to say that we are really interested for this purpose. I think that's going to really, you know, make the likelihood of this happening much greater.
Who's leading Friends right now is Pat, she's the...
She's the director.
Yeah. So, I will put together a letter to include on our next council meeting, the cycle in March, I'll communicate with Pat so that it can have both of our signatures on it, and we'll move forward from there.
Super. Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the gamble.
I can make it up for her if we need to.
We have plenty to do, we've been on all night.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't think we have a whole night to do. Yeah, so, you guys, well, they say that needs are much less...
Yeah. She's like, I'm just like, do you have a story? I don't know. I just, I'm, 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 I'm,
Which one are we?
Well, we got the one we're working on.
Right. The new, and then going on lake up to the...
I don't think that's...
That's...
No.
That's not really a...
The one we're working on is replacing this one.
Okay.
There's not two of them.
Yeah, they extended, that's a target of our, truly, long period of, of sharing the cost. Like, do you think they grant any switchbacks?
But the, uh, the township would stay under fifty-fifty with that?
That's low.
Good. Even for building and...
Yes, it is in Key West.
Well, then it's okay, real poor, but...
He said...
Tarek, what did he just say? Can you understand us, Tarek?
He said he's got really bad connection there.
Said it was fifty. It was his shared expanse.
You, you count that, huh?
It's terrible.
We're all good.
Forget it.
Okay. Okay.
So, I mean, I think the best way to move forward on these is, except for the annexation agreement, if, you know, we take a look through some of these, I can meet with Ron and Tarek, come up with some updated language for them, just bring them current, um, and then sit down with the Hockey Association. But between Steve and I, we can revise some things and bring them back to the full council for approval.
No, I, uh, when, when they were charging for skating, I was in round, uh, insurance round, uh...
Roski, yeah.
Yep, office, and I thought he was still on the board. So I brought up, hey, what's going on? Why are we being charged? No, I ain't on the board. They, okay, go. I said, no, I'm no sense wasting my time with you. I said, if you're on the board. But I told him what the issue was, or then he called the Mrs. Byer. And she called me and she said, and I said, well, we pay, uh, money to have this open. You do. Well, she's on the board and didn't know what's going on. So there's probably everybody else on that board, and that's why we aren't getting her. They don't know what their agreement is.
I had somebody from the board call me, and I told them too, that...
I mean...
That our agreement hadn't changed, as I don't check with Ron, that we hadn't made any changes.
And we're so short on the open free skating hours that, yeah, but definitely, either give us the hours or we're gonna pay less.
Yeah, we should be worried and pay after if it's not gonna change because if we're paying however much for fifty-two hours, then we need to look at what that is and say, well, you know, we were shorted however many thousands of dollars.
The, the outdoor skating, are we getting enough bang for the buck? We pay, what, twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred.
Is it twenty-five or twenty-two fifty?
Twenty-two fifty.
Twenty-two fifty?
I think we are. I mean, to bring that facility into the city, to build it, we'd be talking fifteen, twenty thousand minimum.
Also, we want you to resurface.
Right. So I think actually it is a fairly good deal for the city just to pay twenty-five hundred. I mean, we'd probably have to hire somebody to watch it, to build a warming house. Yeah, I bet we'd be talking thirty to fifty thousand. If we put lights on it, fifty for sure.
And that has lights, yeah.
It has lights.
So does the people who use, like, do they get to use the, uh, the dressing rooms?
The warming shack or whatever?
There is a separate warming house specifically for that, yes.
Is that supervised at all?
I can't answer that.
I think there's just always somebody there, kind of.
Yeah.
From what I know, most kids, you know, some kind of adult brings them, so...
I think that, uh, Arena should also let us know how many times they're resurfacing the ice. Because that does make a, quite a difference, especially later out in the year.
So, on letter G, are we charging enough for the administrative portion of that?
That was just increased, um, for the... Oh, for the H for economic development for...
Yes.
Oh, H for the EDA agreement, that was just increased.
So we're okay with what it is?
Yeah, and I think that's a fee that I think we should look at, you know, as we do budgets every year, and maybe we don't increase it every year, but it's a fee that, you know, we haven't increased it for many, many, many years. And we really are the major record keeper of that.
That's what the Finance Committee does every year is, some of us that are ten, fifteen years old, never been bumped, you gotta look at them.
Yep.
So we'll set a meeting for April twelfth. We'll get that on our second March agenda. Probably at the Greater River Center. And then talk annexation. So that one will be ready by, by then. Okay, we can throw it on as a discussion point for that second meeting in March.
Can we talk food truck in fifteen minutes?
No. I don't think so.
I think it probably can. Uh, I read the letter today, and there's, I think we should probably look at the issues that she has. So Monday night, we're more ready for fireworks.
I, uh, yeah.
She's not the only person who's, like, even so...
I can't hear.
She's not the only person who's reached out with statements that, you know, that should be discussed. So I don't know, but I know we can talk fast.
I got a phone call from Doris today, too. Give it one here. So Becky called me, we chatted for quite a while about her concerns. I think it's reasonable looking at our map of where everything is. I would be supportive of just getting rid of the distance prescription. There's nothing that says I can't open up a restaurant right across the street from any of these things, so...
Yeah, another restaurant would have to pay property taxes.
Yeah, that's the difference. Where, in fact, also, it's, it's pretty standard in most agreements in, in other communities with food trucks, that they are not in front of another food establishment.
But I would be in support of amending the distance, given that it is a smaller, you have a smaller area.
Community, yes.
And something, and also, what someone brought up, who has a business downtown, is that, um, if they have something going on on the weekends, especially Sundays or later at night, um, being able to bring in a food truck when other restaurants are, you know, are closed, I think that it's fair to say that, you know, whatever distance we decide, is it possible to say that it's applicable when that business is open? Because if all the businesses are closed, and it's a Sunday or something like that, you know what I mean? I think that it would be fair to bring in a food truck regardless of distance if the other business is not open.
For an event, yeah.
Yeah.
Heard that one, too.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Well, that could be addressed by coming to, or request to the council to have the event.
Yeah, well, because they got...
Because it'll only be by once a year, or...
Well, if they're gonna have a food truck out there for an event they have, they have to have a street closure, too.
I mean, but if...
Well, it could be in a park.
If it's inside their business.
There's no parking area downtown.
No, let's say like the bank, or, you know what I'm saying.
But if it's inside their business, and it's something like a tournament or something like that, like a smaller, like it was the games...
You still have to have, they can't just have a truck out on the street.
Right, right. I just didn't know...
What is the distance we have in that ordinance, anyway?
Three hundred feet.
And looking at the picture here, if we stay with three hundred, we just well close it to the downtown area.
Yep.
Which maybe is what needs to be done. Then if one of these businesses wants something in their, you know, like, let's say, the community center, or Goodwood or whatever, wanted to have something, it would be a special request.
But I think that some of the food trucks have also been approached about, for businesses that have night shift workers, about coming in, so, and that wouldn't be an event, you know, but businesses are closed, and if they're, I mean...
But there's only, there's nothing downtown that has night shift.
I mean, you're talking industrial.
I'm not having, and I'm sorry, but I'm opposed to that because I live there, and I have enough noise from AMPI, nonstop, all night long.
It's a point, and I said I'm not...
Well, I was approached by, uh, I was approached by the Chamber, uh, and they read that, they were wondering about it as well, because they said, well, we'd like to host a couple of events every year downtown, and is there, uh, us as a Chamber hosting an event downtown, can we get an exemption on this three hundred fee? So that's another thing to think about.
That's why I recommend, uh, special requests per event, or, like I say, if the bank wants to have something in their parking lot and have a food truck, do the request, and they'd probably be approved.
Because for the Chamber to have something downtown, three hundred feet is at least in the next block past Doris's. It's still in the next block. I don't, I mean, if you want to lower it to a couple hundred feet, but I, I still think we have to leave it that way.
You, you agree with that, too?
Right.
And might, okay, well, wasn't there also something about the three block, three car length limiters?
Yes.
Can you talk about that one?
Um, just the food trucks who, one of them reached out to me, I haven't spoken, I got back to the other one yet, but one of them reached out to me, said that their trailer is longer or whatever than three spaces. So they were wondering about that particular, um, I can bring it up.
Well, if they're that big, downtown anyway.
I find it hard to believe that trailers more than three spaces. But if you leave the gate hooked up to the trailer, of course.
I can see what...
And they can be unhucked, I mean, it's a little work.
I was gonna say, if it's more than three spaces, we don't want it downtown anyway.
Let me see what...
Well, that's why.
Or even, even in front of my...
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought loaded three spaces would be...
Six, seven.
For the protection of... That was brought.
It doesn't just say downtown, it's all...
Six, no.
That still shouldn't be.
Yeah, no, like...
The only place that are parking spaces is downtown.
Right, yeah, because if it's downtown, they would probably be in a, in a parking lot.
Well, even in residential, how much you want...
The size of a food unit determines their menu. Units that are less than three parking spots long are usually ice cream trucks, or units that sell a very limited menu, such as, my trailer alone is more than three parking spaces. I, I just say that's what I was told.
I think the problem is, is you have to define your parking spaces. Are you defining it vertical, you know, perpendicular? Are you defining it horizontal?
I'm not, yeah.
I think however it's marked. If that's the street you're parked on, those are the number of spots you're taking up. And I think the purpose of this is to say, if you're gonna park your truck and take away parking from people who want to use our downtown, you're not allowed to eat up more than three spots. That's not saying four vertical spots, that you get three spots.
Including the vehicle that's towing the trailer, unhuck it.
It may have to be unhucked, that's not, that's not a big deal.
No, no, I don't. Yeah, I mean, the...
All the trailers and RVs, it's not a big, big deal, it shouldn't even be an issue.
I think the hardest part would probably be, I mean, you'd have to unhuck the trailer, which isn't bad, but then getting the generator in on the back of the truck, assuming that's where it's stored.
Sure, sure.
But the truck's not powering any of these units, as far as I know. So it shouldn't be that difficult to, to set this up.
And didn't we get this proposed ordinance basically from the league? So this is kind of a standard thing? Oh, we do this?
No, we got, yeah.
Another city.
That was from owner.
Oh, okay.
You know, one thing that concerns me is, what happened to the state Bank of the West was gonna have a customer appreciation day, and in the parking lot, they get a couple of the food trucks there. Is that gonna be prohibited under this?
That's why I'm saying, they could request a special permit for that event. No problem, easy peasy.
I think the thing you gotta remember is, if it's a special event, people aren't going to Legion, or the Legion, or the Eatery, if somebody's bringing in food for their event.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If that's not an option, there's just not going to be food at their event.
Right.
But if we don't allow it, then you're kind of discriminating. Okay, it's okay out at the credit union, but not Bank of the West.
So, yeah.
The central solution...
Well, you could have that, it couldn't be neither, because they're too close to Subway.
Yeah.
Well, that's true.
So, so you either have, I think, the other thing about an ordinance is it has to be enforceable. And I don't know if you want to have every food truck come and try to get a special exception every time for every time they want to do something. We, I think the ordinance, we should just make it so that it's followable and enforceable.
Right, I agree there.
I mean, if we're gonna tell them it's two hundred, three hundred, a hundred and fifty, fine. If it's five spaces or three spaces, whatever it is, they have to abide by it. Because who, which one of us is gonna go up there and say, you're in four spaces? Yeah.
And, and who's gonna measure, uh...
And then who's gonna measure three hundred and fifty feet?
That's why if we're gonna go with this...
From their front door, or is it from the edge of their property, or is it from the center of the building?
Where it's from.
If we're gonna go with this, I suggest the road boundaries. Well, unlike the, the level boundaries that I said.
We'll get Ron, uh, measuring you.
Well, and I agree, but I just...
Yeah, well, unlike the letter...
We got one already.
Nice. Everybody in town talks about wanting more places to eat more, and, you know, there are times when there's just nothing open, or it's not, you know, and I don't want to, I don't want us to look at, we're trying, I, I understand, I definitely understand how I would feel if I owned a brick and mortar restaurant, and I have to pay property taxes, and I've been a longstanding member of the community, and this truck can just come. But at the same time, I don't want us to be looked at as we're trying to squash a business that's trying...
No, but...
Because, because that's what people think now.
Well, we don't want...
It is what it is.
Parking right in front of a business that's trying to operate on this front.
Absolutely.
There has to be some distance.
There has to be, I agree. But I think that there should be some leeway for when businesses are not open, or when it is a special event, because like the Chamber was saying, if they're gonna do something...
Well, a special event is already part of it.
So we can...
It's already part of a, a festival pass.
Okay.
So if they're part of a pre-approved festival, then they're authorized to be within...
But just a festival, not...
Festival, sporting event, or civic event.
Civic event's pretty broad.
It's pretty broad.
Well, it's still a, a organization.
That's a festival.
It's a festival. Would food trucks be allowed on, to, to be there, because, uh, this is the carnival on city property, right?
If they're part of the carnival.
Right, but if they're not part of the carnival, I mean, would they have any access to it?
I think they're not allowed.
It's an agreement with the carnival, you can only have...
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're gonna have an issue with the carnival.
Right, so the Chamber, the reason...
Can and can't.
The reason we put the festival language in was so that all of the carnival vehicles could come without having to get a permit.
Yep.
Because that was gonna throw a huge wrench in their stuff.
Mm-hmm.
But anything operating within those boundaries has to go through the Chamber in order to figure out who's gonna be in there, so we're not running afoul of what the carnival's operating and running, and things like that. Uh, but then having, you know, the festival city events, that was the intent, as I drafted the language that night, was to include things like the trunk retreat and the other Chamber events that we have downtown. So that if we're, if we're saying we're closing off this road, I think then we just know that as part of that application process, if you park a food truck down there, now it's fair game, because we've approved that event as a city.
Right.
We've said, go ahead, it's approved, now you can do it.
Yeah, now, that would cover, yeah, the...
But if provincial bank wants to have something in their parking lot, that's not an event.
Correct.
So it couldn't fall under, like, some kind of civic event?
But there's no restaurant three hundred feet from them.
Well, there is, on the, yeah, there is. The Eatery.
I don't think it's that close.
You also have Casey's.
Selective of football.
They're within the circles, yeah.
Yeah.
It's basically the whole downtown, if you do the three hundred feet. And that's why I recommend you...
I can hear you, so we're gonna do two hundred, but you still gotta figure out how you're gonna measure out three hundred feet.
Paul wrote quite, you know, you said the word Casey's, I'm assuming we're not gonna worry about those convenience stores that sell food?
No.
But I mean, they've got, between their pizza and their subs and everything else...
They're not a sit-down...
But they're not an eat-in place. It's strictly a delivery.
So it is, yeah.
Kind of.
I mean, kind of, I, I sort of shoot, okay? But if you're probably making their backyard, they're gonna be...
Festival language.
What does that say?
Um, yeah.
Thing is, like, with Casey's Subs, it's much different than Subway.
Our ordinance still has that rule.
Well, so then let's just do...
Did you speak with the owner of all these about the insurance issue?
Yeah.
I know, I signed it in her letter.
Oh, yeah. I assume that was written sometime before.
Is that something we have to address? She claimed that she didn't need that much insurance.
Well, according to her insurance person, it's not what is required by the states, and it would be very expensive for businesses to cover that much.
Think we should work to recommendation the legal association's.
I read her letter, too, and I guess there was a lot of stuff about the wishing well slash Eatery. When did they own that?
One week.
Yeah.
One week?
One week.
And it's an issue?
I think she was just referencing what the hours were, like, under the legal...
That's almost laughable.
They did, it was really one week.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, because it was referenced about four times in the letter.
It was one week?
That they owned it, Becky and Jill.
And then also in the letter, and that confused me.
One week.
She said, you can only be in a residential zone seven days a year with the annual permit, is that correct?
Yes.
Is it seven days a year or seven days a week?
Because we don't really want them in residential.
Well, then where's the twenty-one come in?
Hold on, let's go back here, um...
Because the newspaper paraphrased when they made the article, and it made it seem like it was twenty-one days entirely, not twenty-one days in the same spot for non-residential.
So non-residential property more than twenty-one days may not operate on a residential property or in a residential area for more than seven days. So based on this, it doesn't say particular property, it just says a residential property.
Does that mean, um, excuse me, does that mean seven days per year, or seven days at a time?
Nope, per year.
Okay.
Uh, we could button that down to say specific property. So that would allow for seven days at a particular property.
Because if we're saying that they can only do it in a residential property, and then we're saying that the downtown's out because of whatever, I mean, where are they supposed to operate?
Well, I think that's a question we could ask Brian O'Connell with Auntie Ellen's. They say they don't seem to have any issue with what's going on.
But they don't, they, there aren't a lot of times when they get to offer, they go to different, a lot of different places.
They do, but I...
And then options are...
It is, but I've...
He's also been right across the street from Lenny's and had it right there in that parking lot.
Right, well, that was, but, and that, there wasn't an ordinance on the books before this, so...
Well, he still could do that.
Right, so I'm just saying, so, I mean, what he has done in the past doesn't really determine what's gonna happen now.
Well, I think we should all make sure that everyone plays by the same set of rules.
Right, well, that's, I think that's what the point of the ordinance is, but I just don't, it just seems like it's, you know...
Well, if you're gonna buy a yearly license, seven days doesn't sound like much. Well, that's it.
That's if you're doing residential.
That's in residential.
The way that it's written right now says, if you buy a yearly license, you can be in residential for only seven days out of the year. But then if you're on other property, you can be there every other day of the year, you just can't be in the same spot for more than twenty-one days. So you can spend twenty-one days at the Lutheran church, twenty-one days at the Catholic church, twenty-one days wherever you want.
The Methodist church?
And it's, it doesn't matter if it's consecutive or not, right? It's twenty-one days though, so I wouldn't be in favor of upping that a little bit, just because there's only so many places to operate.
Well, that states that.
Right, what the state states that the governing body can work...
I don't think we need to, now that they have twenty-one days, they can go like four or five different places.
Yeah.
That, that's all...
And they can always come back after a two-day break.
I don't know, most of them...
No, it's twenty, no, it's twenty-one days in a certain spot.
Of one location. So they still could go other locations.
Yes, but...
So if you do fourteen days, and then another seven a month later, you're done at that location?
For the year, yes.
For the year.
Can I ask a silly question?
Yeah.
Who's counting?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it would be on you if you got a complaint.
Yes, so you have to keep that record, I'm sure, yeah.
I mean, it's, well, and the other thing is, the permit process, is they're supposed to tell, and it's part of the permit, where they're going to be operating.
Do you have to say when?
I don't, I don't see...
And if not, is there a way to require them to say when? And I mean this in all seriousness, and I agree, it would probably be something we address on a complaint basis. But I'm gonna have no knowledge about back. Where my, you know, unless my guys are going out every day, going, food truck, one, you know. So I'm just trying to, you know, think through that, what that looks like from enforcement side of things. If we're gonna have it, I know why we have it, but can we realistically enforce it?
It's very similar to the garage sale ordinance, we're only, I mean, nobody counts how many garage sales ABC, you know, on South Street has. It's only why when the neighbor says, she said, every week, right, all the weekend for the last two months. I mean, I have to take her word for it.
So I think it'd be one of those things, too, where the food truck would kind of have to keep a record and say, no, we were here this day, and, you know.
No, definitely.
That way if it came up, then they can say, you know what?
But, yeah, but they're, they're...
But the law...
More personally, like, so could anyone?
I don't think they...
That's not...
No, it's exactly like Jennifer said, it's like the, when we had to do the garage sale one.
I think so, too.
To, uh, so, um, Paul had a good question, he wanted to know what needed to accompany. So I drafted up an application, and it is nowhere near even done. It's just words I put on a paper to try to get it started. But to answer your question, according to our ordinance, they need a copy of the license issued by Stearns County or the State Department of Department of Health for the operation of their mobile food unit. They need a certificate, um, evidence, insurance coverage consistent with this division. Um, they need a plan that includes a number of off-street parking spaces, description of the food truck, and location of sites where the food truck will be set up. So that will help a little bit in enforcement, because we're gonna, you know, dates of where they're gonna be and where they're gonna be.
Except when they get a yearly license, things, dates keep getting added over time.
And then temporary permit applications must provide dates and locations for each, up to seven days of the proposed food truck operation.
And what they may want to put on there, too, is, uh, um, when they were last suspected by the Department of Health.
They have to be yearly.
I believe that certificate says that, but they...
It, it has to be done every year.
It's in the ordinance, they have to have that.
It's a, it's a county thing.
Well, yeah, I know that.
And they...
If somebody can look for that interaction...
It has to be posted, it has to be posted, it has to be posted.
I don't...
Where anybody can see it. And, and, uh, and the county sends somebody out every, every year to check.
So the state statute says that their mobile food units, and does not allow them to operate more than twenty-one days annually at any one place unless they have obtained approval from the regulatory authority, which in your case would be the city. So we could, I mean, I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't, but if we determine that, you know...
So if a food store's hosting a baseball tournament, and they get food trucks in, and it stretches over three weekends, you know, they could typically just do their vehicles there, whatever, so they would be complacent, right?
Well, if they're too close to Legion, no, they won't be able to be allowed.
Right, so it's...
I think they'd be okay.
Well, as sporting events...
I thought the school was exempt, though.
Yeah, there's exceptions for school, and there's the sporting event.
Well, the school's exempt from needing a permit, the rest would still apply.
Okay.
But the part about the festivals and the sporting events, that's...
But the school's got enough property, three and a few ways...
Well, so it also comes back to, though, like Ron said, where are we gonna start measuring from? That is gonna be a definite thing you're gonna want to start measuring.
Well, it'd be the plate of the building, so...
I mean, even if you...
If the food truck's here, and here's a corner of the building, you'd go from this corner.
Way, way, way.
Yeah, if they have their ball fields, I think they're fine, but if you have it up in that front parking lot, you've got an issue.
Right, yeah, that'd be, that'd be a much different, uh, you know, because there...
Just saying, we gotta figure out the footage, and where it's gonna be measured from.
Front door.
I mean, if they have two, one on the side and one on...
And that's, we have that, though, we have a business that has two doors, which one is the side, which one is the front?
I'd measure from the plate of the building closest to the trough.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, actually, because they all go out to a patio, too.
So if the truck is over here, I'd measure from this corner of the building. If the truck is over there, I'd measure from this corner of the building. If the truck is over there, I'd measure from this corner of the building.
You're going to have to buy a 300-foot tape.
Well, that can be arranged.
It's going to be too close to another business anyway, so.
That can be arranged.
What, another thing that has been brought up is the parking in the driveway thing. I think that's worth noting because.
Number 19.
Because we have had a food truck that has parked in their driveway for several years, it has not been an issue and we have many other, like construction.
But they don't operate at all with their.
Right, I, I, so that was, that was my just pop, yes, so, but as I believe the ordinance reads that they can't park there. So that's, what does out of service actually mean? Because to me, it sounds like it's just not, out of service sounds like broken to me, not just not running, so.
It means they're not serving food.
It's not functioning.
Right, so.
It's not operating.
Becky was plugging her.
Yeah, because she has.
Trail gear, her hydration. Then she's using it.
Well, unless you want to keep it refrigerated.
Well, exactly.
But you're not selling product out of it.
No, it's fine, because the ordinance doesn't read that.
No, the ordinance. Solution. Just add with the exception of a driveway. And you don't have to worry about out of service. And I'm not going to go along on the grass.
Right, I think a driveway is.
Because.
Well, they still can only do it seven days in the year.
Well, operation, but in storage.
In storage, it doesn't matter.
It does.
I think, I think it should read, and I agree with you, I think it should read that they can be stored
Yes.
on a hard imperious surface, i.e. a driveway.
Yep.
I think that's fair because there's construction, you know, trailers and whatever else for businesses that still.
But now, last year she did operate all of the front yard.
Right, and that's what we're trying to give.
And the other concern, actually, people do call me too. And not to, about complaints and whatnot, and they call me other things too. But anyhow. There was a concern last year that food was coming out of the house and going to the smoker, then into the trailer. And I'm not sure that's the way how is the inspection trailers.
That would have.
I thought the food had to be made in the trailer.
I think that's a Department of Health issue.
I think that'd be up to the Department of Health.
Yeah.
Well, but I mean, if this continues.
Somebody would have to complain to the Department.
Well, I'm complaining because I don't want somebody sick because food was not made in a commercial kitchen.
Did you call the?
And you're selling.
You have to call the county then and have them check.
You know, standards, standards are different in a restaurant than at home, I'm sure.
Maybe it is okay though. Because I mean, some of the product, it has to be smoked. Well, you aren't going to set up a smoker inside the food wagon.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that whatever they have to do for their Department of Health license is pretty, they, they have to prove what they were doing, where to get that license.
Yeah, I mean, if they're doing.
If they're smoking, they're going to have to show the smoker and how they do it. No, you're not going to smoke it.
Well, it's set up in the driveway.
Yeah.
I think the Department of Health will set them straight real quick. And there's not going to be any leeway because, again, everyone's got to play by the same set of rules.
Yeah, that wouldn't even be our.
I mean, I got a friend from New London that used to own a Keos restaurant. And so they sold the restaurant because the catering was so busy. But they went in the truck and go and do whatever they do, but they, they cook it all in their own dedicated building.
In the kitchen.
That's a commercial kitchen. That's a commercial kitchen.
Yeah, right, and this is what, if you wanted to do this, they may want to have to move it up a notch. Now, if they would have kept the restaurant, they could have easily have done that.
More than a week.
Probably. Did they sell like 12 or something at that time?
No, I think it was there by, it was a disagreement on price of equipment.
Well, I think, I mean, the issues that I heard from Keizers when I talked with them were, they talked to me later about ice cream trucks and I saw that that was in the paper. The parking was the big one, operation on a non-through street was the other one. We did not talk on the phone about the insurance, but I saw that in her letter. I just did confirm that Wilmer has the same insurance limit that we have at Hopper's. So I don't think, if it's operating in Wilmer, there are food trucks there, it shouldn't be that unusual or prohibitive to have the same. Parking, I know it was her biggest concern, I'm trying to recall, there were four things total and I can't recall the fourth. But I think just adding language that says park it on a non-perious surface, something, you know, in a driveway, park like a car.
Yeah, because I think saying you can't have it at your home is pretty restrictive.
Yeah.
Especially if you do need a refrigeration, that, I hadn't thought about that myself. And I agree that's.
Yeah, so, just real quick, the insurance thing was, so it says commercial general liability insurance with a limit of not less than $1,500,000 each occurrence is what it reads. If such insurance contains an annual, what's that word? It's not less than $2 million, so according to the agent she spoke with, the Minnesota law states the requirement needed is $1 million for each occurrence and $2 million for the annual, I don't know what that, what's that word?
Probably.
Yes. And she asked him how much it would cost to carry the extra insurance and he advised her that no insurance company writes a policy for $1,500,000 and she would have to purchase an umbrella. So that would bump up the aggregate to $3 million. So I am not first in that at all, but that's just what she was told, so it would be hundreds more for that per year. And I'm not sure what the other food trucks in the area, you know, they can.
Well, depending on other cities too, to have the insurance that like Wilmer or Hutch require, it opens a door for her to go to those towns too if she would so desire.
It does, I just didn't know if we wanted to go past what was required by the state law because if we wanted to make it easier for.
Well, unless you want to add a lot more paperwork, should just keep it all consistent.
Right, so I think it.
I mean, I'm looking through, we had policies and procedures reviewed, Buffalo, St. Cloud, Alec, Wilmer. Alec has a limit in there, but they are very, very low. Wilmer had the same numbers that we ended up using. But I'm not seeing anything in any of the other ones, but I'm looking through them line by line right now. But if we're matching Wilmer, then why, I guess, I don't know why there would be an issue. I, I would find it hard to believe that nobody raised that as a huge concern for the city of Wilmer with all of the events and things that they have going on over there. I don't doubt that Becky's insurance agent told her what he told her or she told her, but.
And that's why there's an H on every corner, you might have to do a little shopping.
Yeah. I, I don't know, I.
Yeah, I wonder what the other food trucks would do, if they were Wilmer or not, or how it works for them. Because I know it's just varies so much by city, because I think it was White Park that got in all that, because they have, just saying you can be 14 days at all lately for the year, and that was a big to-do, so. Depends on the city, I guess.
Can we discuss fees a little?
Yeah.
I could talk with Jennifer just a little bit, I think it was today or another day too, but I think 25, and I've said this in the past, no matter what fees are, when our administration does all this paperwork and the permits and the applications, blah, 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 25 doesn't cover even the frosting on the cake for what's involved. So, I recommend we start at 75.
So over the amounts again?
25, 75, and a half.
And I thought 75, 150, and three to 400.
But 25 is just a one, like a one-time thing.
Did it cost that much to process an application for, I think it was a form they filled out? I mean, and Jennifer, I did take a look at the application that you put together, but I don't think, there is a lot of work in it. And it's, and one of the objectives of the course is, yes, we should figure out how much it does cost because we're not looking to make money on this, but at the same time, we don't want to lose money either.
I mean, the time we look at our health and with benefits, 25 ain't covering an hour. You know, so, I think 75 or at least 50 is a lot more realistic.
50 would probably cover.
But let's start at 50 for the basic, because then let's, let's do 100 on the seven day.
And then 300.
I'm still like 300 on the annual.
Yeah, I mean, it's just to cover the cost, I mean, we're just trying to offer service.
But it's still only one permit, you don't have to come in every time.
Yeah.
You know, it's a one-time doing the paperwork, so.
But you could.
300 is a little excessive.
Pay 700 or 800 more.
Well, that's for a year.
Yeah, but it's, paperwork is only one time.
Well, exactly, but it's, it's about.
I know, that's.
You're competing against the established businesses for a year, not just seven days.
The, yeah, the increase in the annual amount, as I see it, like Neil's getting at, is you're offsetting the property tax laws.
Right, right.
The, I think there will be some food trucks that are in the max months of the year. You don't see too many food trucks coming.
Not much right now.
But it's. I mean, 20 below or whatever.
It, it's not about making money for the city, I realize, just our stupid health permits, we're probably losing every time we do an application on one of them. When you look at our real time.
There is some monitoring that'll go into those more annual ones, even if it's just noticing and seeing where they're at.
The other thing is, you know, I thought the 25 was too low, and that's what I expressed with Neil because it doesn't even cover an hour of a person's work plus. It's not just an application, we have to make sure they have all that, it's bringing it to council. It's sending them their, their permit. The other thing is, is that the fees that we're charging is the upfront fee, but like Paul just said, it doesn't cover any of that, who takes the complaints? Who follows up on the complaints? It doesn't cover any of those then. So, you're never going to be able to put a value on that. But, and I don't know what the right number is, I just thought 25, that was my figure, I thought that was too low to start with. Because a cat license that we used to charge, if it wasn't fixed, was more than that. So that's where I was thinking 25 is too small to be.
Yeah, well, 50, yeah, I agree with, 50's good for the one-time one.
So we're recommending 50 on the, the event.
For the one-time?
You want all the time.
And then where are we at on the seven day?
It's supposed to be 15, that's what I.
I said we're good.
15, 45, that's a good.
So what did you think?
On the seven day, we had.
So 50, you're thinking?
Yeah, for the first one.
Is 100 too much, or is that fair on seven day?
That was, see, Paul, right?
Yeah, I mean, in today's world, and I hate to say it, but when you're paying at least 100 to fill your tank on a.
Yeah.
A hundred bucks ain't much.
$110 they put in.
Used to be some righteous money, it's nothing.
It was higher in Arizona. Businesses have that much pay for costs now too.
Well, you aren't going to buy a bottle of water for a dollar neither, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's all.
50, 100, and 200?
I'm good with two.
Yeah, that's where I'm, I'm good with two.
St. Paul's 250, and we're not going to have the business that they would, so if we're going to have trucks come out here, we can't charge that much.
And this can always be raised if it needs to in five years or.
Well, please, we look at.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I think it was good to have those kind of pre-approved, so we don't have to argue about this on Monday night.
Right.
And the driveway one, I mean, I think we are in both good points.
So I have an editable one from when we did policies, so I can make some changes. What I'm hearing to want changed are residential stuff, with the seven days, should be just not operating on the same residential property for seven days. Not saying you can't operate over seven days in any residential property.
Yeah.
So that that matches the, everything else. Dropping the distance from 300 to... I still think you're right of it entirely, I think it's too much of a headache to measure and figure out, but.
But then, then they can park anywhere and we're going to have complaints and.
I.
I, I, I want to see something, 150, 175.
I'd say 100 feet from their main entrance.
Something like that.
Yeah, or.
At least.
Because I, I could see being irritated if somebody parked.
Puts right.
Food truck right in front of you.
And I still feel like.
Or you're right across.
And you have no recourse if we don't have something.
Yes.
So 100 feet from main address as defined from the building's, main entrance as defined from the building's physical address. How many feet?
I say, would you just say?
150.
I like that, that's half what we were talking and 100 seemed a little short.
Okay, it's a good cut.
I still would personally like to see something saying that if a business is open, but again, if that's not doable. Because there's nowhere to eat sometimes and it would be nice if, especially in summer when there's like people who come in and want to eat somewhere and there's nothing open, would be nice if.
Yeah, I always put in, there are parables, these rules don't apply if.
I mean, I think, I think 150 feet from a business if it's not open.
No, I mean, I mean, nothing, like the restriction's not in place if it's not open.
No, I understand that, but I mean, there's not going to be a lot of places in town where you can't park to accomplish what you want.
Right, even if, yeah, that's true.
So I just want to clarify that, so that we're all on the same page, so if, if O'Conne could like to put up his truck at Bank of the West in their private parking lot, just on a nice summer day, Wednesday afternoon for lunch, they would not be able to do it.
Depends upon if it's 150 feet.
They'll never do it 150 feet.
From her front door.
Probably not, which, which doors are technical address?
The front.
Augusta?
No, it's James.
No, it's James.
Then they would probably make it.
They would make it then?
Okay, so they would make it, okay, so I have one more, okay, what about Perennial Bank and the Cronus Lane? Are we figuring Cronus Lane as being a restaurant?
I don't think so, no.
Even though they sit down and have pizza?
Yeah, but they are open at any except for bowling, that's a.
They're not open for food.
They're not open for food.
I think it's what the main purpose of the establishment is, because it's just like.
For a food establishment.
You know, not convenience, yes, it's main purpose is not a restaurant.
Just want to, just want to make sure, so Legion, you cannot put up, you cannot put up a food truck at the old former ShopCo parking lot?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless it's more.
If you went way over, yeah, if you went way over, you probably couldn't. The other corner next to Teal's?
Yeah.
And if Teal's has a deli, we're still okay with that?
Yeah.
Because Teal's main purpose is not an eat-in restaurant.
I just want to make sure because this is what we're going to get.
I'm going to get all these calls just asking you all this.
Well, and I think Meg is right, if it, their main purpose is food service.
Is.
As good as when it should qualify.
Because Teal's is probably.
Teal's, Teal's parking lot's got to be close to 150.
If it's a sure.
And I, I, I believe it is, but I'm just saying, that's one of the first questions we're going to get, is where can I go then?
What's that street that's got to be 30, 70, 40 something like? Well, we got this street.
Well, there is one more issue she had.
You are so cute.
Is, is that, is it somewhere like in their business plan, like their main purpose, do they have to have a certain.
Oh, number eight, the times, and I don't think we need to change them.
I don't think so, that matches what other municipalities.
Policy and procedures, we said you shut down at eight, it takes you an hour to clean up. And then by that time, it's totally dark, even in midsummer, by nine.
I think eight is only residential though.
Yeah, eight is residential.
Correct.
10 is everywhere else.
Right, and we don't need to change that.
No, but it's a good idea. That also follows the Good Neighbor signs, the electronic signs for the churches. It also kind of follows that, the Good Neighbor, turning them off, so.
And.
And I know what Jean was saying, but I'm just curious, you know, like if you had Lewis or.
It should not be, it needs to be shut up.
Ivan Plastik, maybe come in.
And she was concerned about signs, only having one sign.
Industrial.
Yeah, but I'm thinking the time.
Yeah, they need to shut that out.
So, you know, she paid their master or Ivan Plastik.
She wanted a free sign for.
That was really good. After this, they, Arrow, I don't think there's really quite an exception, no, they're all there, although isolated. There's a name. I think she's just trying to reinforce that, what's that?
There's still a lot of residential by them.
The legislature's so sensible, they're collecting my stuff.
And that can be discussed further, yeah.
Okay, I will have to, thank you, man.
Okay, let's move on.
Yeah.
Yep.
We're moving on.
Okay.
You got Tamara West when you tried your food truck? No, we're not.
Tamara and my assistant are good. I've been up since last block this morning, actually with six.
Jean just got back from a trip with Linda West, babe.
Oh, boy, Jean needs to assume she's not coming back.
Well, I had to be at the airport at six this morning, so...
So Neil, I think you talked, you wanted the council job descriptions on here. Do you wanna talk about your thoughts behind that?
Well, I'm just thinking for when we do get new council people, simple expectations, you know, come to all meetings, if you can't come to a meeting, be sure the mayor knows so you can be excused. Reading your agenda from one end to the other, prioritizing, so you know what's happening when the meeting is going on. Just basic, and there's gotta be other things that, and I know a lot of it's covered at your orientation, but just a two-page thing, expectations, might be a good thing.
We need to add something to that. When we were down in the Minnesota cities, the mayor for Centennial, when he was, you remember this? When he was speaking?
Tell me more, and then I'll go.
He said, when he was elected to the city council, he had no idea what a consent agenda was. So he had this kinda, you know, fake it-to-make it type of thing. But, you know, I was kinda the same way, I didn't know what a consent agenda was when I first came on here. So, things like that, you know, just to explain, a little bit of explanation helps.
Something that I heard at one time, that when you are new on a council, they usually have a meeting with the city administrator, and they kinda give them some of that, they can ask questions, 'cause some other towns have done this. Now, we have never done that.
Yeah.
But, for instance, when I first came on, 25 years ago, I didn't even know what you got paid. I mean, it was like, I didn't know when, or how often, or anything. Yeah, so, I mean, just some of those little things, I just think it's a nice thing when the new council people meet with the city administrator and explain some of it.
Well, I think it does make sense to put together, yeah, put together an orientation package.
Yeah.
I agree 100%.
You know, if we're gonna have a retreat later this year, that would be a good working item. What did we wanna know when we started?
Everybody can put in a little input and come up with a nice two or three-page handout, and there you go.
Just a little orientation, yeah.
Well, so that was something that actually Landon and I thought of doing, 'cause when Tark was brand-new, and we had a new council, but it was simply, we just did not, no, but it would make the most sense, because we had this brand-new city administrator and a brand-new council.
Yeah, now you did.
I can only imagine the confusion what would happen if there was somebody who was board mayor who'd never held public office. There's a lot involved.
There's a lot to learn.
I don't know what to do, I'm trying to think what happened.
Yeah? But was I right, lots of looking for answers?
You just stay-
Imagine what happens if we elected a president who'd never held public office before.
I don't think we have to.
Oh, boy. Did I just say that out loud?
Not sure if it's any worse when they elect them when they have.
So, I think that, I think we can do orientation as part of our retreat, we'll build something for that.
Yeah.
What were your thoughts on the chain of command? I'm just gonna move us right through, 'cause we got six minutes, so.
Okay. Well, it's pretty well, I pay attention, you'll never see me comment on Facebook, because I think you only dig yourself a hole when you start going to these hour-long discussions on Facebook that have no real point or ending.
Well, I agree, you have to be careful what you say.
And I only take phone calls or texts. And anybody that calls me, I will call them back, I will talk to them. Occasionally, I do write a letter to the editor, I have it for a long time, but I think Facebook is the worst line of communication there is. And I highly recommend that we tell people, you wanna answer their complaint on Facebook or their discussion, ask them to talk to the mayor, call the administrator, whatever, don't try to solve their problems. And that's why I put speaking for the city, and I know Sean does once in a while quell the Facebook. You come up and say-
I try to.
Here's the food truck ordinance, blah, 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 here's, I think you, the administrative, or if it's a police issue, the chief, are the only three that really need to talk for the city. You're the emergency management director, obviously, and mayor, it's kinda your job to be the city spokesman. And Terrick is authorized to do that also, and the chief would be authorized to. As council people, I don't wanna talk to the media, I get enough quotes in the press from just being me, but, you know, that's the way I feel fairly strongly. Not to criticize anybody, but just maybe one of those things that in the handbook, a little discussion about Facebook and the hole it can dig you would be a good thing to start off with.
But I think it's, gosh, I was talking earlier today, and you can't make 90% of the people happy even 10% of the time.
Right.
And when you're on Facebook, it doesn't matter what you're posting on there, you might appease the person you're responding to, but you're gonna piss off 10 other people, and it's just gonna keep digging that hole, digging that hole.
I think the only thing on Facebook you should really respond to is if they have a legitimate question, like, where can I do this, or who do I contact, and then, you know.
Yeah, that's kinda informational, you know, that makes sense.
Yeah.
You wanna answer informational, that's not-
It's, you're just not gonna get anywhere.
I think that, just remember when we were at Landon, one of the things that we discussed was an issue with that, 'cause they talked about it being a fine line, because they said, I think it was the small towns reference, or strong towns, at some point, your silence is the assumption that you agree with what's being stated. And so I think that it is definitely a fine line between not, because right now, there is not the council, but another governing body in the city is in quite a bit of hot water over some circumstances, and their hands were tied as to what they had to do, and they have not spoken about it at all whatsoever to anyone, and I, it seems to be a mistake, because people are running with this, well, no, but people are running with assumptions that, you know, this other body was in charge of things that they were not, that there were things they could do that they couldn't, anyway, so, I think it's a line.
They layered up, because at the end of the day, that's probably where it's gonna be.
No, I mean, the school board had no choice. I've got my opinions on it, I know everybody else does, I'm gonna stay neutral and stay out of it.
Oh, absolutely. It's not that bad.
But there's always two sides to every story, that's-
I know with me personally, my silence on an issue doesn't mean I agree with it.
Absolutely.
It means I've got two kids at home, and I don't care to spend every waking minute on Facebook.
Exactly.
And when somebody finds the couch that I gave away six months ago in the river, I didn't throw it in there, that was your call, that was your call.
Yes, the law's no less that once you give something away, you are responsible for what happens to it for the rest of time, right?
Create a grave. I put it out of the curb, it disappeared, it reappeared.
Seven weeks later, it was in the river, and that was apparently Sean's fault.
Probably, I think, I think that one important thing to know, it's a social media post, and we've seen this effectively work, is when there's the disinformation out there. I rarely post on Facebook, but when somebody goes after the PD, and they're saying, well, this happened, it's like, no, no, here are the facts, this is what happened, you know, as far as what we can do out there, because there is, you know, not commenting, and I understand what everyone's saying with that, but not commenting or straining it out, those things take on a life of their own.
Like in the recent thing with the food truck, they believed it was 21 days total at all, because that was with the way the paper paraphrased that.
Well, and they thought we already approved it.
Yes.
So, I got that, the chamber thought we already approved it.
Well, I had the experience with talking to Jay Coles right before he was gonna go talk to Sean, but it was about the gas station and the benzine with the water, but I was talking to him as a citizen and not as a councilman, until he asked me what type of person Sean is.
Well, I can get that.
Except for the couch chuck, and he's great.
Well, I just have one more last comment. A lot of these, and I'm gonna call them clowns, 'cause I feel that's what they are, are rebel rousers, and it's the same ones all the time, and I can't name names, but one is from New York, his brother and dad live here, and he just keeps stirring the stick and riling people up about numerous issues, that because he went to high school here, thinks he's a very concerning citizen, well, he probably should take care of his work in New York. But, and there's a lot of township people that seem to worry so much about what we're doing in the city. And I know we're one happy family, but do we worry about what's happening in the township like they do? And a lot of those are on Facebook, stirring the stick, making the hole thicker and bigger.
Free speech, unfortunately.
I will just close with, I mean, we've got a couple of other things here that we can talk about. Jennifer, Bill, and I sat down to go over zoning order and stuff, set a follow-up meeting, so we can touch on that later again.
And I would like to discuss the next meeting, uh...
Annexation?
Annexation of the properties in town.
Yeah. So we should probably look at setting another working session towards the end of April, given the things that we have on here. But I will say this again in my report on Monday, but I'll just tell everyone that's here, I have, I'm taking a leave of absence from my day job to deal with some medical stuff. Some people know what's going on, others don't, I'll share with you as I feel comfortable. So you'll see me around more often during the day, 'cause getting around and walking and doing this stuff helps clear my mind and focus on what I need to, so, that's what's going on. I appreciate any thoughts and concerns and things of that nature, so, but I'm just taking care of some things. And with that, we will be here.